Okay, good evening, everyone. Notice hereby given the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at five thirty P M on Tuesday, September twenty first, twenty twenty one, at the City Council Chambers at eight oh three West Holland Avenue and via Zoom conference in the City of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at W W W dot city of Alpine dot com. The notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section five five one dot oh four three, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be granted opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after the determination of a quorum and proof of notice of the meeting. So, meeting guidelines and procedures may be found on the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address for the in-person attendance. When addressing the council, please introduce yourself by first and last name and say out loud the ward that you reside in or have business interest in. For public comments made by virtual attendance, please email your name to please email your name and the ward that you reside in or have business interest in. For public comments made by virtual attendance, please email your name and the meeting moderator at C dot call it on at C I dot Alpine dot T X dot U S. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the City Secretary beforehand at city dot secretary at C I dot Alpine dot T X dot U S. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion and refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or the city staff will be allowed. The mayor or city council members may call point to order to stop personal attacks or meeting disruptions. If an individual continues to persist attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. Everybody please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I led the U S D T Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, all members are present here in council chamber, uh, chambers today. The notice of the meeting was posted on September seventeenth at two P M.
Okay, do we have anybody for public comments?
First up, we have Dr. Avinash Rangra.
Okay, Dr. Rangra.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir. Yes, to you, Senator, and to the audience. My name is Avinash Rangra, I'm for Ward one. And the last, at the last meeting, I gave all the council members, mayor, and everybody else two pages. One was revenue, the other was expenses. And I hope you had had time to read. When I find out that the actual numbers, revenue wise, actual numbers, no transfer anything, is twelve million, twelve point seven million. I can give you another one if you want to. And in the last meeting, after the last meeting and today, early I looked at the, went online and looked at the new information that the city manager has given about the recent, about the actual expenses and actual revenues. If you haven't had the chance to look at it, you need to. Uh, this will be under nine three item. Actual expenses are eleven point seven million. I'm sorry, revenues. And the, under that, and you have expenses of eleven point five three million. Now, if you want to spend fifteen million dollars, as is proposed, then you have to get money from the what called fund balance. What is the fund balance? We get certain amount as revenues, and we look at the expenses, our expenses are less than the avenues, so the money that is over, left over, that is called fund balance. And you have about two to three million dollar fund balances, is there somewhere like that? And that money can be used if you give permission to the city manager. The city manager cannot use that money on a row. Okay, because last time, the two pages I gave you, it showed under expensive three million dollars that had to be brought into someplace. And those, that money is coming from the fund balance of the place. That's what I have to tell you. And other than that, I really know you guys are doing a good job. Not that you are feeling miserable, it's enjoyable job, and you will be doing a good. I really thank you for taking the time out to do what you're doing. Anything, any question I have, I can answer.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. At one of the last meetings, I had asked Megan where the money from the transfers was coming from. You're saying that it is coming.
That is, from what I see, that is a fund balance. I think she also has given you information on the fund balance, you have to look for those pages.
Yes, sir, we've been given it, but when I asked her, she told me that it was not coming out of the fund balance.
Well, I don't know where else the money is coming from.
The reserve accounts. The reserve, which is part of.
Yeah, it is coming from.
So you are saying now that it is coming out of the reserve or the fund balance?
On the, the fund balance includes the committed, which is the reserves.
So it is coming out of that?
Part of it, yes.
Okay, when I asked you, you told me it wasn't.
I apologize.
We kind of went round and round because I told you I wanted to kind of be specific about where that money was coming from.
And you're more than welcome to stop by, we could.
Oh, well, I'll ask questions.
Okay, on page sixty-two, one of the pages that I'm looking at. As you have.
Doctor, that was time for item one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Other than that, you can. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mrs. Deborah Durden.
Deborah Durden, Ward three. Um, I'd like to refer also to the budget, um, the item called transfers. Mayor talked about, um, when it comes to accounting, transfers are taken out during the year, according to the charter of this city, taken out during the care, the year when there is a, um, not enough money in the budget. According to best practices, in accounting, the point of, of a budget is to create a balanced budget at the beginning. If you're going to start out in the hole, two point one four three million dollars in the hole, it's like me saying, oh, I'm only going to get this much money in salary, but I want to spend this much. So I'm going to take it out of my savings account, and that's going to be my budget. That's a rainy day fund, people. If you take, you don't take the rainy day fund out to create your budget. Um, part of the problem we're having with this budget right now is according to the charter, it was supposed to be submitted on August first, forty-five days before the time it was supposed to be approved, which was September fifteenth. Our original budget was presented on August seventeenth, but it wasn't a fine budget. It was presented for a first reading, and when that was questioned, your city man, your interim city manager said, oh, we're going to have a first meeting again. That final budget was presented on September seventh. That's why we are past the date that we are supposed to have, you are supposed to have approved this budget. It gave you a week to go for the budget. I wanted to look at the, at the past budgets to compare what the different categories were. When I did a T P I A, Texas Public Information Request from the city, I was told budgets two thousand and eighteen, not, and nineteen, two thousand and nineteen twenty, or excuse me, two thousand nineteen twenty, two thousand twenty twenty-one, did not have spreadsheets. They created a budget in those two years without spreadsheets. I asked for the budget for this current, the spreadsheets for this current budget, and what I was told was, we have spreadsheets, but they're not accurate with this budget. How can you create a fifteen million dollar budget without accurate spreadsheets? Um, one last thing I'd like to say is there will be detailed, I have some detailed calculations that I would like to submit during the discussion. So when the discussion time comes, I would ask that you look to the floor and ask for people on the floor to have comments, so there won't be confusion like there was at the first reading of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Mrs. Katie Nix.
Who's that?
Katie.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Katie Nixon, Northland. I don't think that you would have said it wrong, please, before. But I've, I've emailed my representative several times with no response. So here I am in public to do this. Um, no surprise, this is also about the budget. Um, there's a deficit. I know that's not the word that you all use, given the, you know, the rules around, um, balanced budgets, but there's an over two million dollar deficit. And it's coming from the fund balance, which has been built up over several years um, through hard work and savings. And I just wanted to ask the group, why, why use the fund balance? This mistake.
We're not supposed to respond to public comments when you make comments because your, your comments are not on the agenda. But they're here to listen to you, take the information.
Maybe we can figure out a way that I can get in touch with you directly, and we can have a discussion. Um, but I would caution you to continue to use, you know, such a significant portion of the fund balance in order to fund this deficit. Um, perhaps it would be more fiscally responsible to take a closer look at the expenses in the city budget. Um, I noticed a significant portion of them were increasing. And so I hope that as you discuss that tonight, um, you will reconsider uh, close to zero, zeroing out that fund balance.
Thank you.
Next. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Oscar Cobos.
Oscar Cobos, Ward five, and mostly for all the committee here, mayor and council. I just wanted to stress on item number nine, I'm here in behalf of Mr. Camel here on Gallego and Ninth Street, and that is just a few feet away from my parents' home. Your system has failed in a lot of occasions, and the tank on the hill, I'm trying to figure out the name of it, and the apparatus that fails every so often. This individual was told at the last meeting, well, you buy as is. Well, that's not where we're at. We're on city property, the sidewalk, the curbs, and everything that is needed. When we have beautiful alleys and so much money invested into the alleys, we should take into consideration, Mr. Camel here, and what he's going through with the floodwaters that are coming even in front, in the front portion of my parents', especially his place. Out of a discretionary fund or of somewhere, have consideration now, according to the paper that stated September the ninth. According to the mayor, the city is running as a team. Let's run it as a team, community minded, for every individual, public interest beyond special interest. Thank you.
Next.
Uh, that would be all.
It would be all, okay. All righty, then, let's go ahead and move, we'll have any proclamations. I don't have a report, uh, city attorney.
No report, you're on.
Okay, city manager.
Yes, sir. One second to get this free. It's going to be a brief report. Um, I just want to provide a brief update on the COVID status, especially with our employees. It does affect the departments and how they are able to operate. We currently have two city employees who have tested positive. They are being quarantined, which does put this department, um, short-staffed and behind. Um, we have encouraged all the departments to continue practicing the C D C guidelines. Um, we do have procedures in place for temperature monitoring. We can provide masks at their request. Um, we have tons of hand sanitizer available for them, social distancing. Um, we do encourage us on a regular basis. Sometimes it is hard, especially when you're in the field and you're, you're having to work side by side. I did not get an update this morning from the Big Ben Regional Medical Center. Um, the last update I had received, they had two patients actually in the hospital. As of today, I did not have a number, but that's something also to consider as they're trying to, to weigh that out with the ICU and what's available and not available, and if they need to send them out. Um, we are constantly updating the information on the website. Um, a lot of it is link related, so that individuals can go, it's on our homepage, um, COVID information. There are still programs out there that help not only the public, but small businesses. And if you visit it regularly, you kind of get to see, um, what's available. Um, there is still funding being offered through the different organizations. Um, but take advantage of it if you're a small business owner. But it also provides the links to the Johns Hopkins website, if you want to know the day to day for the, the whole nation in the world. And of course, the Texas Department of Public Health and Services, we also provide the links to that. And just other news articles that are coming up. Um, we are a small community, uh, we do get hit hard when we do get hit. The numbers have been increasing. Um, this was as of yesterday for our area. Um, it was kind of important, just to have the recap on a regular basis. Um, we still are under the pandemic, it has not stopped. Um, so I just encourage everyone, the community, our departments as well, to, to make sure to take advantage of all the information, practice the CDC guidelines. Um, vaccines are available. Um, we do not mandatory require them with our employees, but we do encourage them. And if they need to take city time to do it, to go right ahead and do it. Um, paving, it's always been a hot topic, um, so I kind of want to bring it back up. We have had several setbacks this year, not with just staffing, but we have been very blessed with a lot of rain. Um, when it rains, things become wet, and they cannot pave, they have to wait for it to dry out. When it rains again, it doesn't dry out. Um, Jared Dirtwork has on, almost finished the, the two sections for this fiscal year. He had hoped to do, to do a lot more, but he had some initial setbacks at the beginning of what we consider paving season, which starts around March. Um, so he wasn't able to actually jump on board and get prepared until June. Um, one of the things I did talk to, to Lance Jared about was some of the conditions of some of the roads he had previously paved. Um, so he is going to go back after he finalizes the sections, um, address the pothole on Garnet, which is by the cleaners. I believe that's the current street name. And one of the alleys, um, some of the paving has now come up, do some of the water, um, where it drains off from one of the buildings. He's going to also go back and address that. Our city staff, um, they were set to try to complete seventy seal coat blocks this, uh, summer, but they only completed forty currently. They are going to pave and, or seal coat up until the thirtieth with what they currently have uh, under what they've spent for this year's budget. So they're not quite done, they're going in and trying to, to clean up. You'll, you'll notice that there's roads all over town that have either been torn up, that have been seal coated. Um, you'll, you'll see that they prime them, so they look nice, black and shiny, and then it rains and the prime washes away. They do go back and have to correct that. Um, I also included, and this will be on the website, these are the two sections that were addressed this year. Um, the contract with Jared was originally awarded in the nineteen twenty fiscal year, and he's just working through it as, as he can. Um, so it was a good little bit of the south side, a little bit of the, the east, the west, the north. Um, between the two, they're, they're hitting as many areas of the city as they can. And then, of course, some, some pictures. Um, visuals are, are more important, I think, because you can actually see that the work is being completed and it's progressing. So this is a combination of the streets between our, our street department, Public Works, and, and Jared. Um, I thought it was nice of them to, uh, take the time and class and go out and get these forms, but, but they've been addressing it from all areas, they've been on the south side, the north side, the east, the west, so, and they're not done.
Can you show something?
Why is it not? I apologize. Thank you for catching that, I don't know why it's. So this is the COVID information. Um, this is the paving information, um, and then the two sections, um, this all be online, but these are the pictures that I was referring to, and then thank you for catching that. I'm busy focused on the screen here. Um, that they've done a really good job, and then the two are, are working well to, to going into the next fiscal year. Jared, Jared's not stopping, he is going to continue. Um, we do have a contract with him, but it's important to show that his progress is of right now. So you can see where they primed, which is the slightly darker ones. Um, of course, where they've been rebuilt and paved, the, the lighter colored ones, and then they'll be seal coated as well. But since we didn't start the, the paving season with a bang, I thought we'd finish it with one. And that is all I had. Or are we, let me, let me verify.
Yeah, we, Karen, we, we can't, uh, accept any questions from, from the audience. That's why we have, uh, at the very beginning, we can make your comments or whatnot. But the way it's set up right now, there's no comments. Yes, ma'am, please.
I will.
Okay. Making, getting back to the COVID, I, I talked to the E M C today, we're up at twenty-two cases.
Twenty-two cases. Well, that's actually a relief, because we were at thirty-three, so we, we have decreased.
Okay, let's go to public hearings. Public hearings obtained the citizens' views and comments on the second and final reading of the ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash oh one. In ordinance making appropriations, we're supporting the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year begin October first, twenty twenty-one, and end in September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Appropriated money to sink, to a sinking fund to pay increase in principal in the city indebtedness, adopted the annual budget of the City of Alpine for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Any comments? Yes, sir.
Rick Stevens, a resident of Ward five, have two comments regarding the, uh, proposed ordinance. One versus the ordinance as written is against the city charter. I pointed that out at the last meeting. The city charter requires that the, uh, budget be approved by the last, by the fifteenth, before the fifteenth of the last month of the year. The way the ordinance is currently written violates the city charter. I can't believe that this council would allow the city charter to be violated. The second comment that I'd like to make and continue on the discussion about reserves, uh, when raised at the last meeting, it was pointed out, you know, that, uh, the only way the budget can be balanced is by spending, uh, nearly two point two million dollars uh, of, and when asked the question, and it comes out of the reserve, that will essentially consume the reserve. So when asked the question last time about how you're going to cover that in the future as well, the city manager said, first, well, that's what city council wants to do. The city council has a responsibility to work a balanced budget and to look for the future. Spending that, uh, two point two million dollars out of reserve is going to result, as was pointed out the last meeting, that if the budget were to continue at the same rate, because the reserve will be gone, it results in every resident in the City of Alpine having to expend up to three hundred and fifty dollars per person, which for a family of four counts to fourteen hundred dollars per person. So all you're doing is putting the city in debt and, and creating a huge issue for the city, for the residents. And the only way you're going to be able to increase it is to find more revenue, which is going to be, you're going to raise utility bills, uh, which is trash, wastewater, gas, uh, or you're going to have to increase taxes, which will not be enough to cover it. You're going to have to go out for debt, you're going to therefore pay the cost of money, or you're going to have to reduce services. So in my view, you do not have the authority to pass a budget tonight, it needs to be fixed. And the second, you need to review the budget. That's the end of my comments at this time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Kathy. We can't, yeah, comments on it.
So as, uh, as Mr. Stevens was up there talking, I had an idea. Um, you know, I, I looked at all these financial statements, and that's what I've been doing for the last fifteen years of my career. It was really hard for me to analyze and evaluate them, and not very well done, and really hard to read. But I hope that you will consider taking this vote off the table today. I'm not going to say all the right words for this room, I didn't even know you couldn't ask questions, so. Um, but I hope you consider taking it off the table and reanalyzing these areas. You have the time to do it. There's no reason to fully deplete the, the fund, the fund balance. Um, and if you have to spend more than you earn, then potentially spreading it out over several years instead of depleting this to zero in just the one year, the one annual budget. So I hope you will consider that instead of approving or passing this budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dirt.
Um, just to start this out, um, my background is in statistics, I do data analysis, I do trend analysis. You can't just look at a budget one year. I've gone back five years and looked at your budgets. Um, starting in twenty seventeen, eighteen, you had no transfers whatsoever with a seventeen and a half million, with twelve and a half million dollar budget. The next year, um, I don't know exactly what happened, but there were transfers of three hundred thousand on a twelve million, eight hundred thousand dollar budget. Um, and twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, your budget went up to thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, thirteen million, excuse me, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, it's a five hundred thousand dollar raise, okay? You only used twelve thousand dollars in transfers during that year. We hit twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, your budget went up one point five million dollars. Your transfers were one point two seven, one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That is eight point seven percent of your budget in transfers. This year, in this budget, it's going up an additional one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars you're pulling out of your transfers before anything even happens. You're pulling out of your savings account, two million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Now, here's the key. Out of the transfers, the percent of your revenue that you have in transfers is thirteen and a half percent of your revenue. I think what Mr. Stevens said about what, what do you, what the, from the floor, it was asked, what do we do when the money runs out? Your interim city manager's response was, we raise taxes or we lower services. Now, you don't start out dragging money out because you want to do something. We have to have balanced budgets personally. We're not the federal government here, we cannot print our own money. But eventually, that money is going to run out. If you vote to pass this budget as it is right now, what you're telling all of the citizens of Alpine is, it's fine, we can go ahead and take it out. Two point one four eight million dollars to start out and hope nothing happens. These budgets are not going down. The amount of money you're taking out of transfers is increasing every year. And it's not just creep, increasing in small amounts. This thing is increasing by mi, a million dollars out of the transfers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to the second item, public hearings obtained citizens' views and comments on the second and final reading of ordinance 2021-09-02. An ordinance adopting the FY 2021-2022 tax rate for the city of Alpine, Texas, of Alpine. A tax rate of 0.508345 per $100 valuation has been recommended by FY 2021-2022. Maintenance and operation is 0.468819. And interest in sinking is .039526 on each $100 valuation of property. Any comments on this? Okay, no comments. Let's move on. Yes, sir.
Again, I've been asked on the board one. The question about this, these transfers. This is not the first year we have started these transfers. In 2018, 19, also approved a transfer.
What's that, sir? You could comment on this. We're talking about, we're talking about the comments.
I did not interrupt anybody, and I expect not any interruption.
So.
Or call us.
I speak. Call a point of order, call a point of order, please.
2018, 19, council approved two transfers. 1, 291,891, and 12,028. I had not heard any comment at that time. I didn't attend the meeting, but newspaper didn't say much. Regardless. In 2021, last year, there's a transfer of 1.122784 million dollars. Was there any question raised at that time? It should have, that was wrong. And I could point out, actual revenues and expenses are so much. You want to spend more money? And then the city manager should ask you, here's the source of money, can I spend it? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, anybody else? Seeing nobody else, that's we want to. Item number three, public hearings obtained citizens' views and comments on the second and final reading of ordinance 2021-09-03. An ordinance amending FY 2020-2021 budget. Any comments? Okay, none. Let's go to public hearings, obtain the citizen views and comments on short-term rail special use permits and applications. No comments? Okay. Then let's move on to the consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department reports, board appointments, notice to the public. The following items are routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item, and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately. Unless requested by a city council member, if which events items or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration. It is normal sequence after the items not required separate have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pull item number seven out of consent for further discussion.
Item number seven?
Please.
Okay. City manager, item one, please.
Approval of September 7th, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of September 14th, 2021, special meeting minutes. Item number three, approval of the appointment of Patsy Culver to chair of the animal advisory board. Oh, sorry, Judy, I'm just reading yours. Item number four, approval of appointment of Karen Cantrell to Parks and Recreation Board. Item number five, approval of resolution 2021-09-29. A resolution establishing a mental health leave policy as required by Senate Bill 1359. Item six, approve resolution 2021-09-30. A resolution designating the Alpine Avalanche as the official newspaper for fiscal year 2122. Item seven has been pulled. Item eight, approval of short-term rental special use permit applications for 1615 Uvalde Street. Owner of record is Aldo Villanueva. And B801 East Avenue E, owner of record is Kim Langridge.
Entertain a motion for these eight, for these seven items, and we're pulling seven out of the pool.
I make a motion that you approve these seven items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Can you see in our notes in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, most carries now. You want to get to seven?
That's fine.
It doesn't have to go in action.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Approval of resolution 2021-09-31. A resolution approving the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee recommendation to allocate $10,000 from FY 2020 to 2021 hotel occupancy tax funds. Sports to the Sora State University rodeo.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? I don't hear a second, so the motion fails.
So I'm sorry, can you just clarify, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah. The motion was to
To, to approve the resolution 2021-09-31. You want me to read the whole thing?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was to approve that resolution.
Yes. Everybody understand that. Okay, motion's in second. All's in favor, any discussion?
I have some, I just a discussion. First of all, I want to stress that Saros brings in a lot of people. I'm all for this. I just had some questions on why this wasn't included in earlier in the year when all the hot committee recommendations were put in.
So they initially did not apply for hot funds, and I actually have Chris here to help further explain it. They did submit an application, and we do have extra revenue that we are having to amend towards publications, advertising promotions. So we're, and it was recommended by the hot committee to try to include it in this go around as well. And they have applied for the future as well for next year.
So were other people made aware that they could come up? I know that there's a deadline, excuse me, to put in for these.
I can't answer that, but Chris may be able to because he works with the hot committee more than I do.
Chris, is, I know that there's, or there used to be a deadline on when people could put in.
Yes.
For the uses, it's the hot funds.
That is correct.
So were people given a chance and notified that they could come in now, since there was an abundance of fees and, and request more funds?
There was not an explicit window opened. What happened was, and one could legitimately make an accusation of a certain element of special treatment. I want to put that on the table and tell you exactly what happened. They applied for, during the 2021, 2022 window for applications, but misunderstandingly applied for this fiscal year. And so I spoke to them and amended their application to the next fiscal year. But I did bring the possibility to the hotel occupancy committee because there was that opportunity that they were meeting and could discuss the possibility of, since this is, was an event that had been going on for 70 years in Alpine and had never been funded. It has a long track record of bringing hotel activity to the city, but has never received any hotel tax funds. So I did believe that it was worthy to bring the question to the hotel occupancy tax committee to see if they wanted to recommend to council that special one-time dispensation to this event be made. And so it is in that respect, it is a special request, because it was unexpected. There was no opportunity to make an offer open to the public. So that, that's basically what happened. So it was, it was a special circumstance, but it wasn't a secret one. It was within the public meetings of the committee. Yes.
I too agree that, that it is something that is very important to Alpine. I do understand that it brings a lot of people into the area. Like I said, I just, I just have an issue with making concessions and not treating everybody the same way. I think that, you know, notice should have been sent out or something. Like I said, Saros is very important, brings in a lot to Alpine. That's just the only issue I have with that.
Okay, any more discussion? CNN, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, it gets unanimous. Okay. Let's move on to item number eight. Information and discussion items, city manager.
So these are two items that have come up. The first one is the dewatering box. And my screen will share appropriately this time. Does not look like it wants to. So every year for several years, as we get new utility directors, new thought processes get in place as to how the wastewater treatment plant should operate, the best way to dispose of, the best way to solve the solutions, the Band-Aids at the time. And one of the solutions was the purchase of 2D watering boxes. And they basically look like Conex boxes. And they do not hold your everyday household goods. They actually do hold solid waste. And we purchased two of them. We purchased one in July of 2015, and we purchased one in March of 2016. And 30,150 for each. They were used for a little less than a year. It just, it did not work effectively to help dispose of the sludge at our wastewater treatment plant. It was an idea and a temporary solution that unfortunately did not pan out. They have not been used since then. I bring it to your attention now because moving forward, we do have a city who has reached out, thanks to the engineers that the department has secured and wants to purchase them. We even sent a follow-up email with, are you sure? We have to take it before council. This would have to be an agreement. Council would have to set a price, and we could sell it, kind of do a negotiation. And they are actively interested. They are aware that it is on our council agenda as a discussion, and they would like us to move forward with proposing an agreement for them to purchase them. I wanted it on your radar as I worked back with Jess Washington and the city of Robey to come up with basically an interlocal that allows them to purchase it at a flat rate. They would come and pick them up. They are currently an asset that is sitting there not being used. And it would be my recommendation to go ahead and move forward with, with the process. We do have to follow some procurement procedures. I'm just ensure we follow the state laws. We are allowed to sell between government entities. But I wanted it on your radar. It's kind of important since as we go into this next year, the wastewater treatment plant needs a little help. And everything that we can properly, I don't want to say dispose of, but if we can sell it off and provide those additional revenue for that department to move forward with their big projects, we'll be discussing one later. It's important. And the second item is the upcoming fiscal year request for proposals and qualifications. So this is probably a little bit more information than you want to know. The city is required to follow state law for procurement, especially over anything that costs 50,000. There's different ways to procure items. The big ones that the city uses are request for proposals and request for qualifications. Proposals are competitive bids. There is a whole advertising process. There is an opening of the sealed bids. There is city council approval. We've included part of this process in our grant policy that was already prior approved. So I wanted to bring this before council so that as you start seeing these, you kind of understand why we're doing it. And we are required, if a vendor, we use them three times, and they're at 49,000, that fourth time, we have to go out for bid. We cannot actually separate a purchase just to keep it under that amount. If during the whole year, we spend in excess of 50,000, we are required by law to go out for that procurement process. The other side is request for qualifications. This one's particularly important as we move into grants and bigger projects. In order to secure an engineer, you would go out for requests for qualifications. And you're looking for the best one for the job in this case. And you're not focused on necessarily the price, which with request for proposals you are. And with the request for qualifications, you want the best one to do your job. And this includes architects, engineers, certified accountants, land surveyors, physicians. There's a whole array of them. So I, little, little background here. This is where I mentioned, a city may not avoid the application of competitive bidding on proposal loss by purposely dividing a single purchase. This is where I mentioned it, if we use them, we're going to use them once a quarter. So every time we purchase something, it's under that 50,000. At the end of the year, we've now exceeded it. We have violated the state law. And so that's one thing that we need to ensure we don't. And to ensure that, and sign note here, sorry, expectation, exceptions, there are exceptions. One of the ones that we have used in the past is the procurement made for, necessary to preserve and protect the public health or safety of the city residents. That is a big one, especially with our water, wastewater, and gas utilities. And so we have a list of proposals. I've worked with the different departments, and I've looked at our vendors, kind of where we're at with, okay, we've used this one, and we can't use them anymore. And but they're the only vendor we have to use. So we're wanting to take this from a proactive approach, and we want to go out for services ahead of time so that we have them available as we need them. There are certain vendors we know we are going to use. We are going to use Skinner Well Service. We are going to use Arrowhead Well Service. We are going to use All American Pump. It's just the nature of what's been going on with, with our infrastructure. Unfortunately, as we get towards the middle of the year, and we've already exceeded that 50, we have to stop, go out for an RFP. Are moving forward, have to make that determination, is it an emergency? Is it going to affect public health? Is it just, you know, a project that needed to be completed, but it, we didn't complete it before they hit the 50,000? And we currently have a few that are current contracts and are ready to expire. And the sanitation, it is currently at the end of its lifespan. It expires in February 2022. This is our TDS, Texas Disposal System, our trash collection. We would go out for a request for proposal. It is a competitive bid with a whole list of things we're looking for. This would be an end of conversation in the next month. Do we want poly carts? Do we want dumpsters? Do we want them to address more bulky pickup? Do we want more illegal dumping corrected? There's just a wealth of things that the city can put on the table to have that conversation, not only with the current supplier, but there's others out there that may come in and say, you know, we want to, we want to compete. You know, we want to throw our name in the hat. Our depository, currently we use West Texas National Bank. It expires in December of 2021. We do have a renew option, or we can go back out for a new RFP and see if anyone else wants to bid for our depositaries. Our airport fuel, I bring this one up because there's actually no set expiration on it. It's, the current contract is actually under Transpake's Aviation, dated back to March 1st, 1999. So when the city fully took over the airport, they just kept the current fuel supplier in place. Things have changed, times have changed. Different services can be provided by different fuel sources. It's in the best interest of the city to go out and see what those are. And then, of course, our ambulance service, West Texas Ambulance, is our current one, and it does expire in 2022. That is That is several several months down the road, but I wanted to include it. I also included all the ones that are possible, things that may come up. Our infrastructure, supplies and equipment. Instead of having to every time they need to buy something and go out for quotes. If we had a contract in place, they would know to go to the one supplier. That's that's who we go to. We're not having to take the time to do all the extra steps because we've secured one vendor to do it. Our wastewater supplies and equipment, our chemicals, well maintenance. I asterisk this one because this would be your Skinner well service, your Arrowhead well service, your All American pump. Coming, you know, from from so many issues we've had. It's important that if they knew that they could just pick up the phone and call and not have to worry about, okay, did we procure it correctly? Did we, did we do this right? Of course, our sanitation, janitorial supplies. Our mobile belt press, sludge de-watering service. Because we have issues with our sewer plant, we do have to hire a vendor to come in and actually help remove some of the sledge. It's around thirty thousand a pop. So if we do it twice a year, once in the fall, once in the summer, we've exceeded the fifty thousand. Generator maintenance, council had approved setting some money aside. Once we get them, we need to ensure that we keep them properly maintained for those emergency needs. Electrical service, lift station pump and motor services, hot hot tap installations, fire hydrant, new installations and maintenance. You're going to see a pattern here. It's all water and wastewater. Of course, uniforms, plumbing services, cleaning services, pest control. We currently don't have a pest control service for the city. We have the animal shelter who is maintained and that's the only building. Otherwise, you'll see us with our roach cans and spraying ourselves. Heavy equipment purchases, heavy equipment rentals, road materials. We do this annually, paving rebuilds. And then this past year, we went out three times for the concessionaire for midweek, midweek mercantile. This was the availability to have someone come and sell adult beverages at the the event. We had no responses. We do have interest now, but we'd need to go back out for that RFP. And then the request for qualifications. The main one is engineering. With our grants, some of them do require that we have an engineer sign off on some of the plans. We've kind of done a on-call basis and reached out to ones that are more local to help us complete those grant applications. As we move into bigger grants and more opportunities, it would be nice to be able to just pick up the phone and say, okay, this is what we've got going on. We need your assistance. And there are different types of engineers, hiring an engineer firm, proposing additional services from one we already have on staff. Those are all options, but I have it on the list. And then IT services. So IT services, we're kind of hit and miss with the city. Our staff alone does really well with trying to keep up with with technology. I mean, computers have to be upgraded, our website, our phone system, just our applications. You know, what we have available and don't have available. So it'd be nice to have that contract where we can just reach out and call someone or, you know, down the road, you know, hire an IT person part-time or something. But we do have a aging IT system that we would like to update. But it's it's knowing that we know someone who can network it properly, who can connect what needs to be connected. It's not setting up your normal desktop anymore. We do have a lot of cloud-based services. So I wanted to get that out there for council to see. As we move into this next year, we would like to start requesting these proposals be submitted. So we can get vendors secured. So as we take on the infrastructure and additional projects, we can just knock them out of the park. We're not waiting for responses. Are we going to go over the fifty thousand? Are we not going to go over the fifty thousand? It doesn't hurt to go out for them, even if we don't go over the fifty thousand. It just reassures not only the council, in my opinion, but also the state that we are following guidelines. And there's also additional steps. We do have additional things that we have to include throughout the process itself. We can't just put out something without some some outlining criteria. The state does have some criteria as who we can allow to bid, who we cannot allow to bid. So it's just get that out there on the radar. You're going to start seeing a lot more of these, the grant side especially. A lot of information at once.
Yes, it was. Any questions? Okay, let's move on to item number nine. Action items to be confident by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items are limited to ten per meeting after being called upon by the mayor, mayor pro temp. Are required to state their names of the ward and which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own this or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak. Time available. And we're going to go with item number one.
Approve Altech Engineering Corporation, the lowest bidder for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project, which includes the automated bar screen installation, aerator, motor installation, dissolved oxygen probe, mobilization, bonding and insurance.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Altech Engineering Corporation lowest bidder for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made, second discussion.
I do have the engineer here. He he drove all the way to answer any of your questions. And it's Mr. Kurt Harley from Jacob and Martin. If you have questions.
You got your work cut out for you.
And I would be happy to answer any questions you got.
Counsel.
Well, mine would be regarding the insurance of the mobilization bonding and and the insurance. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
In the in the contract, just to give you a little bit of context of what we did for the city, is we prepared a set of contract documents, specifications with a bid package essentially, and follow the procurement requirements that Megan laid out earlier to get bids from contractors. And in those contract documents, we lay out certain insurance requirements like minimum liability insurance, automobile automobile liability insurance. There's a there's a list, I'm sorry, I don't have it here in front of me. But it's a minimum requirements that they need to have in insurance for to be able to do the project. They provide to us a certificate of insurance. After y'all awarded the project, they have to provide us a certificate of insurance that shows that they have those minimum insurance requirements to be able to do the project. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
What kind of monies are we looking at?
For this project?
Yes.
The low bid is seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And it's not seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents, exactly. Just so y'all know, it's in y'all's bid packet, your council packet. Y'all did receive four bids for this, which is good. And the three bid, the three low bids were pretty competitive. They were all were all within about forty thousand dollars. Which you always like to see that. One, you always like to see that you get more than one bid. And then you also like to see that you get bids that are competitive. And you got a very competitive bidding process here. We checked references on that low bidder. We've actually worked with them on multiple other projects, very good contractors. No reservations and recommend to do the project.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Enjoy your drive home.
Okay, item two. Enter Sarah, city manager.
Approve second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash oh one, an ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Alpine, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-one and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness, adopting the annual budget for the city of Alpine for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero one, an ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Alpine, Texas.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made, second discussion, counsel.
As I've stated before, I too have issues with the transfers from the fund balance or whatever y'all want to call it. I agree that we're going into money that we shouldn't be using. As Megan stated at one point, that money is there and we get into it during the year should the need arise. Well, we're starting with it at the very beginning. What are we going to do if a need does arise later and we don't have that money? Where it's taken years to do this, and I do realize that some of the previous years it has been used, but never to this amount. One of the times that it was used quite largely was for the the pavement issues. And that was something that had been pushed and pushed and pushed. So finally, they they tried to deal with it. I know that there's a lot of things that need to be done within the city. I'd like to be known as the the council that got it all. But I do not want to be known as the council that put the city into despair and causes us to raise taxes or lose services next year. I don't think that we need to go with this. Therefore, I make a motion that we extend the current fiscal year budget until end of October, at least, providing all expenses and revenues for the month until then we can fully understand what it is that this budget is asking us to do.
So that was your discussion. Any more discussion on it? I can't recognize you all because we already, I had asked everybody, had a comment at the very beginning of the meeting.
Yes. HB twenty-eight forty says, a governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Because we allow the public comment before, it's well within the guidelines to just basically accept them at that time.
Right. I I understand what it says, but, you know, the state is the one.
After being called upon by the mayor.
And I don't recognize anybody. You're out of, you're out of order, man. Yes, you're out of order. Okay, so.
I think this is an important issue.
Yeah, but.
And you're, I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just, I I this part of my discussion. I feel that we're not allowing the citizens a chance to voice their concerns. They are the ones that are going to be impacted by this, not just the city council. We're talking about something that's going to impact each and every citizen of Alpine. And we're sitting up here telling them that we're not going to allow them to have any input.
They were allowed at the very beginning of the meeting, ma'am.
Mr. Stevens was the only one sitting in those meetings. They were very well known that they were out there. And y'all wait till the seventh, twelfth and eleventh hour where they were that tall to come in here and then question. Everybody liked Megan until she got on our team. Then she seemed to be the one who couldn't balance the vote. If you listen to Dr. Bob, but we inherited some of this debt. We didn't create this debt. I didn't create this debt that we're trying to take care of.
Okay, part of order, and I'm going to call for the, I'm going to call for the question. I'll for the question.
On this one, mayor will need a roll call vote.
Okay, and we'll start on my left side, Constable Johnson.
I'll go for it. Four.
I'm four, against.
Okay, it's four to one. Thank you all very much. Go to item number three.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash oh three, an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one budget.
I make a motion to amend the second and final reading to incorporate the repair addition of a curb at the elder patch, patchability. A minute ago, you told me I couldn't make it after it had been voted, so now I'm trying to make it.
You should have said that this was where you're going to put it in. Okay, I'm sorry. But we'll have to go back. And it was item number seven, number, I'm sorry. That's not on there.
I I'm wanting to amend it so that this, okay, tell you what, I want to amend it to adjust my discretionary fund.
How much money do you have in your discretionary fund?
Three thousand. I'll put about a hundred and ninety-five dollars. If I'm not mistaken.
I don't know the cost of what it would be.
It doesn't matter, but that's that's what I'm going to do. That discretionary fund is to be used for each council member at his discretion. And that's where I intend to use my discretionary fund. That is not due to expire until the end of this month.
Okay, so you got a hundred and some odd dollars?
No, I have everything on the four except a hundred and ninety-five.
So you're making a motion to amend.
To amend. The second and final reading, an ordinance amending the FYI twenty twenty-one budget. Because that budget included my discretionary fund transfer. Well, I will be using that discretionary fund.
Okay. It's been made to amend item number three. Okay, I need a second. Number three.
Two or three?
Three.
We're on three.
Need a second. Okay, motion's been made and second. Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. The Constable Rodriguez used her discretionary funds.
I have some discussion. You're able to vote on how I use my discretionary.
No, no, you make it, you made an amendment.
Right, because she's already doing this.
Amending was originally on the.
Yeah. Amendment to use your discretionary fund. You're the one that brought it up.
Okay, so how do I get it out of you transferring it?
But I'd have to put it in a line item or you did.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, I don't, if you approve this final reading, it gives, it's, it does away with my discretionary fund.
Okay, but that's, and we're voting right now on your amendment.
We're going to move to to approve your amendment.
I asked for a second, got a second, okay?
And I don't see a word of extra discretionary.
Well, I thought you were moving that over.
Not.
It's got it to where it's being taken out.
Mayor discretionary, Ward three discretionary and Ward four.
Yeah, but it has parentheses, so aren't you going to be taking it out and reallocating it since it wasn't used into the general budget? So what did that mean?
The amendment is just amending these specific line items.
Which did not include that?
No, your discretionary fund's not included.
Okay. My mistake, I apologize.
You want to withdraw?
I withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to vote on the original motion on item number three.
She can still use her discretionary fund when we vote on this. I don't, I just don't want to vote for or against it. I don't understand. I don't want to make it where she can't.
No, it wasn't an item for your discussion period.
She still has her minds and she can spend.
You should be able to.
Yes, okay. So we're voting on the original motion on item number three. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay. And city manager.
I just want to make sure we do this one correctly. There wasn't an original motion to approve the second and final reading of the the amendment. There was a motion to amend.
And she withdrew.
So then you need a motion to actually approve.
We did.
Who made that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it was, okay, is there a second? Okay. Motion's been made, second. Any discussion on? None, okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Let's move on to item number four.
Approve resolution twenty twenty-one oh nine dash thirty-two, a resolution approving the city of Alpine appointment of Jerry Johnson, mayor pro temp to the Brewster County appraisal district board of directors.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash three two, a resolution approving the city of Alpine appointment of Jerry Johnson, mayor pro temp to the Brewster County appraisal district board of directors.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's made, second, any discussion? Okay, motion's made. Second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. You'd be out of order, man. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Let's go to item number five.
Approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash three-three. A resolution authorizing the city of Alpine to participate in the twenty twenty-two regional solid waste grant program.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash three-three.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number six.
Approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash three-four. A resolution amending utility fees pursuant to chapter ninety-eight, utilities to the Alpine Code of Ordinance.
Okay, entertain a motion.
We're on, which one?
I am six.
I move that we table that pending workshops. I feel that that is a, the way it's written, we're basically putting it out to where we have no control over what the prices are gonna be. And once again, this does include the public.
Okay, is there a second? Yes, sir.
Council Johnson's original motion was to approve.
He never made it. Yeah.
I do wanna indicate that in the original utility fee schedule, the gas department wasn't included. So one of the main changes to the the fee schedule is to include the gas department.
So currently, but doesn't it kinda open it up though?
We're not really changing anything. We're including what should have been approved prior and was in the prior resolution or prior ordinance.
What do you mean should have been approved before? Why, why wasn't it approved before?
I can't explain why that section was skipped, but the fee schedule should have included all of the different, of the water, the wastewater sanitation and the gas department. And if you look at the the backup documentation, you'll notice that the gas department wasn't included.
But I mean, it leaves all the rates kinda open, either to be set by city council, to be set by city council via the contract.
For the the sanitation, yes. Sanitation is set by contract.
Right, and then, no, sanitation is garbage rates says here is be set or set by city council.
Yes, which is through a contract when you decide on which sanitation company you wanna go with.
And then they're next part till next year, correct?
Correct.
Like I said, I think that's something that needs more input.
Okay. So you made a motion to table it, correct? Okay, is there a second? I don't see a second. So a motion dies. So let's get back to the original motion and entertain a motion on item number six.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash three-four. A resolution amending utilities fees pursuant to chapter ninety-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Four, forward and one against, correct? Okay. Item, motion carries. Item number seven.
Approve changes to the city attorney contract.
Okay. Need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve changes to the city attorney contract.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have just one comment. Or discussion. And this is on page four of seven. Item number twenty-one. I just questioned whether we need to control every single action, either ourselves or the manager or the secretary. I realize we want some control over his expenses and what he does, but I don't know if we need to control every single thing. There might be times when he just needs to make contact with someone and he doesn't have time to talk to. Might be on the weekend when something happens that he needs some advice on or some consideration on it. We don't meet and Megan and Geo are out of town or whatever. That's my moment.
Yeah, but you know, I think that anytime somebody that takes place during the weekend, they should contact Megan or Geo with an email or a voicemail or text so that they're aware of it, that it did occur.
Normally, I would agree with you, but Mr. Potten has made it. He's done this numerous times. One of his previous comments to me was that he worked and represented the whole city of Alpine. While that may be true to some extent, there has been a lot of billing that could have been done without had he just waited and spoken to to Megan, Geo, or the council. As it is, I, I, I even included the city manager, the city secretary. Our charter says that at the, at city council, but I'm even including them on there so that that doesn't happen to where he does not have to wait until council meets or or anything is put on the back burner. Megan is always very, has been approachable, is always able to be contacted. That was one of the things she told us when she was on, that she, we would always be able to get a hold of her. I for one have called her after hours and I have, I've never had an issue in getting a hold of her. So I don't think that would be it. So like I said, my, my main reason in putting this up is that he's had a practice of billing for things that I don't think we needed to pay for.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question.
My understanding of this, this contract is, it's the exact contract that the previous city attorney had. Now, I never saw any of her billing. I don't have a clue what she was doing.
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am. When, when the other billing was coming in from the previous city attorney, it was being checked by, by our previous city manager. And anything was in question, he would call, he would contact us and see if, if had we okayed that expense or was there something on there? Now, Rod did bring up the fact that there was a lot of charges on her, on, on, on her billing. But she made it quite clear to us when we first started that she was not very, very up on city law so that it would take some looking into a lot of our issues. But there was never anything on there that the city manager could not say, I asked for, or somebody else had asked for.
Any more discussion, counsel?
My understanding.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're not asking for legal advice.
Let's have order here. I don't, I asked for the question. I'm gonna call for the question. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
For approval of the.
For approval, yes. Okay, I wanna see those hands again, please. Got one. Okay, all those over voting, all those opposed.
Are y'all approving the old contract or the contract changed that's yellow? That's my confusion.
That's only.
Was to approve the changes.
The, the changes yellow?
Yes.
Yes.
And they, they're voting right now to approve the changes.
So why is he able to talk?
So the changes in yellow would say that I can't.
If I may, last, last council meeting, one of, one of, a member of the public indicated that we did not need a second to amend a motion, which wasn't true. And this is how this got added back.
I called a question.
Question's been called for. Okay. So all those that wanna approve the changes to item number seven, please raise your right hand. One, all those that are against, raise your right hand. Four, okay, motion, motion fail. You're out of order, sir. Okay, let's go to item number eight.
Approve letter of engagement from Gibson Ruddock Patterson LLC to perform a single audit for the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
I move that we approve the letter of engagement from Gibson Ruddock Patterson LLC to perform a single audit for the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
All right, is there a second? Okay, motion's made. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, item number nine.
To approve the installation of a curb at the old Apache building located in five oh one West by Edel Street.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails. Okay, let's go on to item number ten.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash oh two, an ordinance adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tax rate for the city of Alpine. A tax rate of point five zero eight three four five per hundred valuation has been recommended for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Maintenance and operation is four point four six eight eight one nine and interest and sinking is point zero three nine five two six on each hundred dollar valuation property.
I'm going to approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero two, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two tax rate for the city of Alpine.
Okay, is there a second?
Actually, can you include the full amount? This one does have to be read very specifically.
A tax rate of zero point five zero eight three four five per one hundred valuation has been recommended for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Maintenance and operations is zero point four six eight eight one nine and interest and sinking is zero point, point zero three nine five two six on each hundred dollar valuation property.
That's, that's your move. Is there a second? Okay, motion's made. Second, any discussion? Seeing none. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, let's start on my right side with city council member comments.
I have comments about phone, to jazz their phone. You know, when I go out to eat with my grandchildren, I take their phones away so I don't look to the top of their head. Can y'all look at us? We're not on the phone. Our phones are put up. And we look at y'all, I know you're playing games, but we're doing, just a table away so people can have a private office. If we have to make it an ordinance, that's fine. Daryl needs his phone and that's the only person in here that needs a phone to out in public. It's just a polite thing to do. My other comment is Megan. You know, I'll say it again. Everybody loved Megan for eight, nine, ten years. And the minute she takes over and does the same budget and we absorb the same stuff that was handed to us, we become the evil city council. And that's fine. I ran for office. People voted me up here. I didn't come just sit in a chair and play on my phone. Thanks.
Okay.
My rant.
You're, you're out of order, guys. You're out of order. Okay.
I better just not say anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Terry. Thank you all very much. And we don't have, we don't have any extension. We don't have an executive session. So, mean to adjourn.